Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the many blessings that has given us. We pray that that will be with those who are in harm's way, both in military and civilian capacities overseas. We pray that that would be with us as we deliberate the business of Cages Mountain, and may we act in accordance with the best will of you and our community. These things we ask in thy name and for thy sake, amen.
Please rise, please, place the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I trust that Logan emailed this to everybody. I know Alan couldn't open it because it's PDF, he can part PDF, but if you, is anyone had an opportunity to look over it, or do any additions or adjustments need to be made at this time?
I move the agenda to be approved as written.
Okay, we have a motion.
Set now.
All favor sign of the same eye.
Aye.
It's approved. Also, the minutes are also included within your agenda. There again, are there any adjustments or additions that need to be made to that?
I'll make the motion when you approve unless written.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
All favor sign of the same eye.
Aye.
Okay, it is also approved. Jason Robbins is not here tonight, so we'll give right to the council action. First up is Ms. Tracy Nestor. Logan and I spoke with her earlier, and Tracy, if you will tell us how much more money you want for us.
Well, good evening, council. My name is Tracy Nestor, and I work for Republic Services. I'm not sure for the record, but usually they have, you have to know where I live. But I live in Hickory, North Carolina, and I've been with Republic Services for about eight years. I did meet with Ronnie and with Logan in February to talk about some new services that Republic would like to offer Cages Mountain. The contract to collect your waste and trash expires June 30th of this year. And our company is moving more towards an automated system of collection. The trucks that we are currently servicing your account with are probably 12 years old. And so we would like to upgrade our equipment, buy some new trucks, and also provide all of your residents with carts. So everything in your community will look a lot more uniform than what it does right now. We'll have a 95 gallon cart for trash and a 95 gallon cart for recycling. In addition to the added equipment, you will also now be able to recycle more items. You will be accepting plastics, 1 through 7s, where we used to just accept 1s and 2s. We'll be able to accept all cardboard, where cardboard was not accepted before, mixed papers, and even rigid plastics. I think if you've got a 5 gallon bucket that you need to get rid of, you can get rid of those things. Those are also the little playmate toys, those kind of things, those rigid plastics. We'll be accepting those as well. In order to do that, we need two things from Cages Mountain. We need approval from council to approve this new equipment and a five-year term, because we're going to have to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on between carts and trucks to service the account. So, but the good thing is, is there will be a change in the way that we collect your recycling, rather than it being every week, it will be every other week. So we'll be able to buy all this equipment and provide carts for your entire community, and there will only be a 3% increase to the rate. And traditionally, I think, I think this contract has been, if I recall, has it been 20 years, Logan, you remember when it, 1996?
Point.
Yeah, I think it, so this contract's been in effect for about 20 years. There was not a price increase last year, and the price increase this year would have been about 1.5%. So really, if you look at what we're asking for, really, we're asking about a 1.5% above what the CPI is. But it is a 3% increase over what you're currently paying. And so I also provided some information on automation. If you guys want, I planned on having a PowerPoint presentation, but somebody checked out my projector. So if you don't mind, what I have for you here is just to kind of talk about automation, introduce to you what the type of collection is, but generally, it is easier for your residents. It's cleaner for the neighborhood. I think one of the things that Logan and I talked about was you're not going to have your plastics and your newspapers blowing all over the place anymore, because they'll be contained in the cart. You also won't have bags of trash land signs on roads anymore, because they'll all be contained in the cart. So again, it's cleaner for the neighborhood, it's easier to use to roll the carts out, and it does promote more recycling. We have found in the areas that we have converted over to cart collection for recycling have increased 30 to 50% in recycling. The city of Hickory's, their volumes of recycling have doubled since we switched them last April, is when we swapped them. But automation was originally started in the 1970s. You see a picture there of what one of those original trucks look like. This is a picture of what your truck, of the new trucks on the streets that you'll see. And basically what that is, is that's got a one-armed bandit that picks the cart up and dumps it there in the middle of the truck. But it also doesn't prevent the driver, if he has to get out, if there's more that doesn't fit into the cart, that they will still try to pick everything up there every day. Residents will now save the expense and hassle of having to provide their own car. We will distribute the carts ourselves, and many communities find the automating recuse collection drives their recycling efforts, just like I said. You'll see about a 30 to 50% increase. Automation is safer. It's safer for the customer, and it's safer for our workers. Where we have one person driving the truck right now and one person on the back flipping the, doing a rear load and flipping the cart or their container, it will only be, there'll just be one driver in the truck now. It also is better for our drivers, it reduces employee turnover. There are some high upfront costs and higher maintenance on vehicles. And a need for us to provide customer education and training. I need to speak with Logan about what kind of outreach that you guys have, a newsletter, how you would like for us to communicate this to the community. One of the things that we will do when we distribute the carts is that we provide a brochure that again shows what their collection days are for trash and for recycling. It'll also have a nice list of everything that they can put, what should go in the trash can, what should go in the recycling. Well, all of that will be done with distribution of carts. But if we need additional education, that's something that I can provide too. You just need to let me know what else you may think, you may need. You've got pictures of the trucks, the carts. I will say that if you look at the picture of the carts, that says the equipment. Your carts will be blue. The trash cart will have a red or blue lid, like the one on the far left. And then one on the far right will be your recycling container. But that container's not going to be green on the top, it's going to be a light blue, a Carolina blue, as a matter of fact. And the reason that our company's made this change is because the trucks were going out at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning, and it's hard to tell the difference between a green lid and a blue lid. So we had to lighten it up, make it much lighter, so that they could tell the difference between the recycling and the trash cart. So that will be one change. And again, no more of the bag trash, all that's going to be contained in the carts. And then just a little bit more about our company. We are the leading provider for solid waste collection and recycling in North Carolina. We have about 22,000 vehicles on the road and 78 recycling facilities. We just invested about $12 million at the top of county on a recycling facility there. We serve more than 2,800 municipalities in over 40 states. Your local team, the general manager is Don Phelps, and the operations manager, which is John Ossenhauer, which is probably Logan would talk to, or James Miller on a regular basis if you have complaints. We also will be rolling out a wireless application that, called My Resource, where your residents can log in and see what day their collection day is, they can put a complaint in if they've been missed. That will all be filed and really kind of taken away from council. And we should be able to provide you any kind of recording if we have any of your residents that call in on a regular basis from your community. And I think that that's about it. But we are a local company with proven experience. We've been servicing your community for over 20 years. And together, we can improve waste and recycling collection services and make a more sustainable system for your community. And our mission is to provide services that exceed your highest expectations. So to not respectfully request that the council approve a five-year term with Republic Services.
And what's the dollar bet on that five-year?
Specifically for your trash collection, it would be $7,086 a month, and your recycling collection would be $3,291 a month. I hope I have my handy calculator with me, but roughly a little over $10,000 a month.
Tracy, let me ask you one other thing that you may have missed in your presentation, but I don't think so. We talked about it when we spoke before, you talked about wireless communications, anybody? But in, or some people still don't have internet. Now, are there going to be phone numbers made available to the folks where they can call in directly?
Absolutely. When we distributed carts, we'll have a customer service number that will be provided, and the information for the My Resource application will also be provided.
And you said that every other week, correct, every other week is when we have service, and are they picked up?
Well, you'll have trash collection every week, and recycling every other week.
Got you, okay.
Because you'll be filling up a cart the size of your trash can, that's why. It's a change on the recycling side.
How big are the current small containers?
The recycling, they're only like 18 gallons.
And so the new ones are 96.
Yes.
So they were picking up roughly 36 every two weeks, now they're picking up 96.
Yeah, and kind of what we found is those bins, that people would fill them up, and then they would fill their trash up. You know, they would get, till that would get full, and then they would quit recycling and put it all in the trash. So now this should be able to really kind of separate your trash from your recycling.
What's this hard on you, just reach out and wrap around them? So you don't have to position it a certain way, or?
It does, the carts will tell you which way to, it'll say front, for you to leave it the closest to the street.
There's no markings of where you need to have it at or anything, just get it close to the street.
So if I leave mine to have, she can pull up and give it.
They might. One of the things that we want to point out that is important to us and your community is that if you do have elderly members in your community that can provide you that need what is called backdoor service, we do offer backdoor service up to 5% of your population at no additional charge. And so that may be something that you may need to take a look at.
Wish we'd probably have one of them. Is this including the information they're sending?
It'll be in your actual contract.
So this is something we will probably need to let them know if they need that service.
You will need to maybe decide locally, I, go back and look if it's in your, I don't know if it was in your previous contract about backdoor collection. But that usually does come up, because there's usually concern with the carts, that sometimes they can't. I have found that elderly people can drop a bag or two by the side of the road, but you know, to push a cart out, it may be, and so you may need to determine what your criteria is for determining that. And usually, it's a doctor's note that they can provide you.
Any questions for Tracy? Okay.
We have the motion, go ahead and accept. You contract a 3% increase.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the contract as presented by Tracy. Second, all favor sign of the same eye. And Tracy, I do appreciate the, you know, the more convenience, I mean, the bins, just everything you spoke of, it sounds like it's going to be better.
It's been very well received in all the communities that we've been converting. So, and we certainly appreciate your business and thank you. And I will be getting a formalized contract for you to sign within the next week.
When should this start?
Oh, that is, thanks for asking. We're going to shoot for trying to do this July 1st. I was supposed to be here last month to get this approved, and my apologies, I lost my father-in-law this past month. So, but it may be August the 1st. Now that I have the approval, I'll go back to the general manager, and he'll go in and start ordering the equipment, and I'll have a firm date for you. And we will not, the price increase will not start until we get the equipment delivered. But we're shooting for July 1st, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to have these back recycled.
I can.
I'll link one of mine back every now and then.
Oh, well, hang on, you're welcome to keep it, but if you're going to trash it, I will recycle it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, as we have discussed as a council, following the leads of some other surrounding municipalities, placing in God we trust in our building, in our signs. And Logan has contacted two gentlemen that is willing to help us out with this. So, and you yourselves want to go and not forget, but whichever one of you two wants to make his presentation, you know, that'd be great.
I want to start by thanking the honorable elected officials for receiving us tonight, listening to our presentation. You'll have to forgive me, my hearing is bad, I lost my hearing, and Vietnam is getting worse by the year, so you may have to holler at me, okay, if you want me to hear something. My name is Audie Yancy, and I'm a representative for the U.S. Motto Action Committee. And I'm here tonight to give you the invitation to join the growing list of towns, cities, and counties that are putting our national motto on their buildings and in their buildings. And so I assume that you've already read the, looked at the brochure that we have. You have a copy over there. So I'm not going to take a lot of your time to explain anything unless you have a specific question. The Motto Action Committee is founded for the sole purpose to promote patriotism and encourage elected officials to vote yes, to place the national motto, "In God We Trust", on and in your buildings. Many have the, over the back here and over the front. We have, we've placed it on all of the buildings in the door. We've placed it on the building in Hildrebrand lately, in Roodhis. We're going to place one on the sawmills and the granite falls. We haven't gotten to Hudson yet, but we've covered just about everything else around here, and hoping that you folks will join in with the rest of them there. These words that we have, "In God We Trust", have been on our currency since 1864. And on July 30th, 1956, during the Dwight D. Eisenhower administration, the U.S. Congress adopted "In God We Trust" as the official national motto of the United States. Since then, on November the 1st, 2011, the House of Representatives voted overwhelmingly, 396 to 9, to reaffirm "In God We Trust" as our national motto. Primarily because some have mistaken "Aeternum Pluribus Solum" for our national motto, and it is not. So this resolution specifically encourages placement of "In God We Trust" on and in all governmental buildings, from courthouses down to the local schoolhouses. So we hope that you will, you know, will join the many, many people. I have the statistic, the numbers here. There have been a great many of our counties, cities, and towns in North Carolina. I think it's something like, oh, I have the sheet right here, can't find it now. But there are something like six, I think six, oh, here it is. I think it's 64 counties, if I'm not mistaken, that already adopted this. And many towns and cities have done the same. So the cost of your placing, of our placing this on your buildings, first of all, let me say this. You get to choose where it goes, how big it is, how small it is, everything about it. And then you let us know what you want. Of course, our vice president or vice chair, Rick Langer, will be in touch with you to let you, you know, to give you some guidance. But the final decision is all yours, for where you want to put it, how you want it placed, or somewhere. For instance, over in Hildrebrand, it's on a brick monument out in the parking lot. I don't know if you saw the recent, recently, the high school, the old high school caught fire over there. And in the HDR, in the Hickory Daily Record, they had a picture of two little girls and the monument there, and everything was, it was just weird, because everything in there was kind of faded, except in "In God We Trust" and there was, in bright letters on a black background. There are some citizens and some businesses who are doing it on their own, for instance, in your own furnishings in Hickory. They're right on 321 there, coming north on 321, as a matter of fact, Todd just mentioned this to me. I already knew about it, they have it on a huge banner, they put it out on their own. And we gave them a certificate of appreciation, I believe it was last month or the month before last, and they really appreciated that. But 100% of the cost comes from private donations, from churches, businesses, individuals, anyone who wants to donate. We don't ask the town for any monies to accomplish this. And let's see if there's anything else that I can help you with here. I think that's about it, I wish you had some questions.
Do I have any questions? I understand about, you know, the retail hall and this behind us sounds great, you know? On the wall behind us, it would sound great, and on the exterior, you know, maybe on the evenings you come in. You know, of course, it would just pertain to here, and maybe our town seal at the council amendments, but we also wanted to entertain the idea to put it within our town seal somewhere. It's just be a small detail, is that something you could help us with also?
A little bit entirely up to you. Rick Langer will be in touch with Mr. Shook here, and it's going to work out the things. He's already been in touch with it.
Correct, and he's mentioned that that's a possibility.
Okay.
So like I said, it's completely up to you. Some of these, some of them, for instance, Roodhis, the lettering is only about that tall, but they didn't have room for anything else. If you have room for wood for lettering that high, if you want it. But, oh, if you go over into Lenore, you see their government buildings, I think their letters are probably about 12 inches, somewhere between 6 and 12 inches lettering, out on the outside of their buildings. So it's all up to you folks, whatever you want, you got it. As you'll see, goes, whatever Cages Mountain wants, Cages Mountain's got.
Any other questions, Mr. Yancy? At this time, I'll.
Oh, let me mention one more thing too. You will not run into any problems legal. This has all been settled at the Supreme Court. It was taken to the Supreme Court, the U.S. Supreme Court, they refused to listen to it, and therefore, the Ferroport District Court would come along. And so it's the law.
This time, I'll add a motion.
Make a motion if you do.
All, second motion. Okay, all favor sign of the same eye. And I wholeheartedly agree with the council, and we thank you so much for doing this for us. And you know, I think it's an important step for all municipalities, you know, that, you know, believe in God and adopt. Thank you so much, Mr. Yancy.
We'll get all the collecting donations as soon as possible, and get it up as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Third thing on the agenda is a donation request by Call Up County Horse Council. Logan, do you want to address that?
Yes, we have, we've received donations over the past two years. The Horse Council, they are asking for $300, of which they're maxing allocations. The lady was here last year to address you, Adrian Royeligen. I pronounced it wrong last year, I'll probably pronounce it wrong this year. But anyway, they have asked for $300 after your approval. If that's something you guys wish to. We've been doing it. I'm making it. We. I've been here two years, and you've done both here. Yep.
Okay. We have a motion.
Hold on.
In a second, all favor sign of the same eye. Okay, that donation is approved. Our graduation is coming up fast too, so we also have a donation request from them.
Correct, they did not, they have not filled out our donation request form yet and returned it, however, we do every year allocate them $300 as well.
It's a good thing.
Yeah. Can we approve it then if they kind of filled out? Can we do that?
I'll make a motion, we give them the $300 that we normally do give them after graduation.
I'll modify that by saying, after we receive the application correctly, and then I'll second the motion.
Okay. Logan, is this something that just was due via phone call, or?
No, this is attachment four. However, it's a mail-out that they sent, and so I contacted them for them to fill out the, our actual donation request form. They just haven't gotten back, but they did last year.
Okay, so Cheryl made the motion, and Alan admitted that pending proper paperwork to request this donation. So with the motion of the second, to that degree, I'll, all favor sign of the same eye. It is also approved. And I would appreciate you there.
Okay, so if you will look at attachment five, I will send this by Duke Energy. They have asked that we show or grant a day for alignment appreciation. They feel it's a worthwhile cause, and they want to show their employees that it's something that they support. However, Councilman Bowley mentioned to me that Blue Ridge Electric was not included as part of the companies that were listed. And he's asked that we make a change to include them as one of the companies mentioned on this proclamation.
They do serve accounting. I think they made it a little bit in Cakers Mountain. I'm not sure if they...
I don't think so, but they do serve a large portion of COVID.
Especially the northern part.
Yeah.
And they're asking for this to be done on April eighteenth of this year. So, with your vote, we can approve it to make April eighteenth alignment appreciation day.
I certainly do appreciate it when we have that, that's for sure. So, this proclamation, without going through all the queer asses and all that, if one's had an opportunity to look over that. Those in favor of adopting this proclamation, well, I guess I need a motion according to the agenda here.
I make the motion that we accept that day.
Okay, we have a motion for April eighteenth. That's also including Blue Ridge, correct?
Correct, with the addition.
Okay. And needs to be noted, I suppose. So, we have a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, that is also approved. Now, it is time for, as we discussed, we've got some land here within our town limits. And we've had to adopt a ordinance, approved of this. We should be, to the best of our knowledge, get approved and upon installation of this, be the first municipality in the county to have a solar farm. So, Logan, should I address this to you or the property owners, or?
Well, you're more than welcome to address it to me than John, and speak on what you want. So, he was contacted by two different companies about property he owns to place a solar farm. We don't have a solar farm ordinance, nor does anyone in the county. So, attachment six, if you're looking at it, is the ordinance that I've drawn up. It is four pages in length. It is a mesh of several ordinances within Katamba Burke, at the Alexander area. It addresses everything you can think of. I'm sure you've read through it. It would apply to M1B1 in our twenty districts where the property size is at least twenty-five acres or more in size. This is not small lots that we're talking about. So, neighbors, neighbors who might fear that we're bringing a solar farm to, you know, place in the yard next one, something happen, big pieces of property. What we would want to do, if you reviewed it and you liked the language that's in it, we would need to approve it, to send before the planning board for a recommendation, for their recommendation. It would also need to go before them in a public hearing to let the public speak on it at least, and that needs to be advertised at least thirty days in advance. So, what would happen next is we would, if you guys did decide to approve it before the planning board, we would meet next month with the planning board, have this on there, and have it advertised in the news topic thirty days in advance. Once they give a recommendation, we would bring it back to you guys next month, hopefully, to let on for its official approval.
So, we just go, take them all as a say, take it down to the planning board?
Correct. If you agree with the language that's in it.
And I hope everyone's happy. Logan and I have discussed it at length. And in fact, there were a lot or two that either I felt comfortable with. And, you know, it seems to meet what Logan and I thought would be prudent for this. But everyone has to be on board on this, so, you know, and, sir, if you'd like to address this a little bit as far as what to expect along with, you know, not just this ordinance, but, you know, what we're looking at once this is implemented.
Basically, why? There's no noise that comes from solar farm. It's once it's in place, it's there. To me, it's retirement, and it's education for my children. I've got two young boys, by grace of God, one, I'm talking two-year-old, by fifty-eight. I've got to get them through college, right? So, Logan, I've had this piece of property since two thousand eight. It's been set in Iowa. And I've got the opportunity to get some of my money back. And I travel, I travel, and I see these farms all over the place. And to me, there's, you know, it's different. It catches out when you go by, but it's not isolated. And it's just something that I've been approached by, and some companies to do it. And I'm really in it. As far as land, just laying there, I'm not, never going to do anything with it. You know, I can't farm, and I can't put seed in the ground at my age. It might grow, and it might not, and I might lose another piece of that, but this guaranteed income to me, in fact, for the future.
This ain't pertaining to the ordinance itself, but I mean, just some curiosity things. Do they have someone to sell the electricity to that it?
Duke Energy has already been in contact with them by purchasing the power. Have they agreed to purchase the power from farm?
And how many panels might be there, and how much?
As far as panels, they want to put a seven-megawatt DC plant there. When I'm saying plant, I'm not talking about a big old facility, everything's round level. And unfortunately, they turned it into AC power. That's all I know about it.
But you don't know how much power it produces?
Seven-megawatts is all I know. As far as how it's all, I don't know. I drive a truck, I'm busy this time of year, so...
That's the future, though. Push it in. We might be able to get some, been a town having it in our community.
Well, if you look across the street, Reinhard has put a solar farm on the planet there.
Yeah, they sure have. And, you know, you know, also fuels, it's not going to last forever. Last year, last year in our generation, but after that...
I do know that both companies have been in touch with me. They have already asked for at least a thirty-year lease with the option for ten more.
A thirty-year lease?
Thirty-year lease with the option to do ten more, I mean, that's a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll be fortunate if you can ever redo the contract.
That's a retaliation.
Let me ask you, sir, the requirements here are pretty specific about developing buffer for maintaining a site that's pleasant to the community. Also, there's a requirement for fencing, security fencing, and locking gates and so forth. And it also has a very comprehensive means by which the owner posts a bond and so on and so forth if this thing is no longer in operation and it's dismantled and so on and so forth. Are you okay with all of those provisions?
Yes, sir, all that's going to be provided by the company that I deal with.
Yeah, okay.
Our ordinance will be passed up to them, and they will have to buy by them, by the lease that we have.
And Logan, on that pick, on Roman numeral eight?
Roman numeral eight.
Yeah, we don't have the town per. Oh, I'm sorry, Roman numeral thirteen.
Thirteen, okay, let's go to thirteen. I believe I serve as both the manager and clerk. Is that correct?
Well, we like to think of you as our manager, yes, sir.
Yeah, and being a clerk, too, angle, you know, ready to...
That's right.
I'm disappointed.
It could give you retirement benefits, too.
I just took that out. And...
We can substitute that language, Alan, with town manager.
Yeah.
That's one.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think this requires no action on the part of the town council tonight, except that you direct the code to the planning board, because it'll come back for our...
Right, right. And if everyone is comfortable with that, that's exactly what we'll do. We'll send this to the planning board, and when you anticipate the planning board coming together, do we have some other annexation properties to use?
There will be several things that are addressed at that one. The original date for that was supposed to be April eighteenth of next month, the second Thursday. However, I graduate that night, so I'm not going to be able to do it then. We will probably meet either the second Tuesday or the first Thursday of next month, just as long as the thirty-day window for the public hearing notice is met. We'll try to do it late the first week of May or early second.
Okay.
So, now I'll make this month?
No.
Well, they're going for a thirty-day.
For the public hearing notice.
It's for them to make the, see what, never approve.
Okay. Okay, well, let's get a hold of this here, okay?
Gotcha.
There are no committee appointments in reports. Logan has some information from us that's coming from Lenore regarding our sewer rates. So, Logan, I'll let you address that.
So, I'll send a letter, a late February. It said, "The resale sewer rates are increasing by three percent, and your resale sewer rate will be three dollars and seventy-four cents per one thousand gallons, which becomes effective July first, twenty sixteen. Our current resale water rate of two-twelve will remain the same. So, we will need to include this in the budget for next year for increased sewer rate." However, they require no action, it is just informative.
Okay.
They seem like they go up every year.
They did go up three percent last year.
One bad, I was picked up, they're not doing that yet.
Well, the borrowers picked up an increasing...
This is three percent this year.
This year, but not every year.
I would say that the CPI for what is considered water sewer trash, which is not the CPI that I'm putting you guys on, does run around three percent. About three point eight percent this year.
Per year.
Per year, yeah. So...
Okay. Well, that's something to look forward to. Okay, Logan, thank you for that. At this time, Tracy, you're the only public we've got left. Do you have anything to say?
No, just thank you. I like to stick around sometimes and see what's going on in the community, so.
Okay.
And thank you for your time, and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Okay. They'll pick the trash cans we got up the same day they bring the new ones.
They will, and they'll recycle those.
Oh, so our old ninety-six gallon cans are gone, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, I don't know how many, I don't think we had a lot out here, because I thought most of...
Unless they bought them or rented them?
Or renting them. Now, if they're renting them and they're in good shape, they'll stay. But they'll no longer have to pay us separately for the rental.
Okay.
If that makes any sense. It'll be, it's part of the, it's part of the contract now.
Actually, they'll fit into the new bins.
Yes.
And we can recycle them.
And that's true. That may, that might, that's a great suggestion. As your bin, you can stick it inside that recycling cart, and it will get recycled. So, yes, that's very good. But so many people, the town manager, Taylorsville, they hand out the recycling carts. They buy, or the bins, they buy them for their town, and they keep them at the city hall. And he says, "I know that somebody is just sitting with a house full of these and a basement full of these," because he thinks that people come and get them and use them for storage. So, we may not get a lot of them back, because people like the size of them, and we'll reuse, or we'll use them for something, which that's actually the first, you know, there's three Rs in the recycling R, and reuse is the first one before you recycle, so.
What's the third?
I'm joking.
You said three.
I know.
You can get back to me.
Reuse, recycle, reduce, yeah. Actually, reduce is first, reuse, and then recycle is actually the third.
Oh, third, I know.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay, Tracy. Well, Guy, you reach toward our public. Do you have anything at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. So, yep, town council comments, do you have any?
I'm good.
Alan?
Yes, sir.
Cheryl? And Nina, do I? So, the next meeting, according to this, is May third, is six P.M. So, I look for everyone to be here then. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We adjourned.
Yeah, man, Ron.
Yes, sir.
Logan said, "We said, 'Agree to move my name here,' so you sat beside a handsome man." I said, "Well, I went to the mayor, I go sit beside the mayor." Remember that with race time?
Yeah. I got you.
You guys have a nice evening.
Thank you.
I'll be touched.
What was that, twenty of your meetings? This is the first one I've been down here, so...
Yeah, it is. This is the first time we've seen you here.
I've been, not been here, there was like an EDC meeting or something here.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
I know you from a while, used to work, we used to talk.
Yeah, and I know we did that, so...
So, we're glad to have you. I hope you come back next time, and if you can't, send somebody. We don't have any fights or anything like that here, but we'd like to get reported on.
Yeah, I'll find them out, and we'll show...